They were giving some statistics about communities in the south. It was terrible.
All right, Fred, sorry to interrupt you. We're gonna get started. All right, so the January 26, 2022, regular meeting of the Port of Secna will come to order. Just a note, we are joined by Deb Downey. She's just on the phone. So thank you for calling in, Deb. And we'll just start with the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, wonderful. So we're gonna start with a wonderful presentation from Fred Wagner, who is very grateful for his representing the Wood Porkutuck Watershed Association. And he's here on their behalf to drumroll, present the town with a check awarded through a grant, which was led by Fred's effort from their association to use towards conceptual design of hopefully the Circus Lot Riverside future park. So Fred, over to you.
Okay, do you want me to? It wouldn't be necessary for me to stand, would it?
No, whatever you want. Informal.
Because there's only a few people here. Okay, my name is Fred Wagner, for the few people that don't know. And I am the Stonington representative to the Wood Porkutuck Wild and Scenic Rivers Stewardship Council. And about 50 years ago, Congress determined that there were rivers that were very important to the general public in the United States. So they enacted the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act to protect, preserve, and enhance the qualities of the rivers, these rivers, for future generations and current generations. And about seven or eight years ago, the National Park Service and the Wood Porkutuck Watershed Association got together and we developed a document of about 160 pages
A link to it.
Of remarkable observable values of these rivers and presented them to Congress with an act for the Wood Porkutuck Watershed Rivers to be part of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. And Congress overwhelmingly approved it and the President signed off on it. So the seven major rivers and all the tributaries in the Wood Porkutuck Watershed are part of the National Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. Of course, the one of concern for us is the Porkutuck River, which is the estuary that leads all of the rivers in the Wood Porkutuck Watershed lead to the Porkutuck Estuary and they discharge at the mouth of the Porkutuck into Little Narragansett. So that's a very important part of the watershed and its properties. Now, what has the organization done for Stonington? We were in discussion and negotiation with DEM. They have 25 acres on the Porkutuck River, just below Marywall on River Road in Porkutuck. And we wanted them to make it official. So they had just had the property there. So after some negotiation with them, they formally announced that it was now known and identified as the Porkutuck River Wildlife Management Area. And a few of us went down there and gave, including Deborah, excuse me, Danielle. And we walked the two trails that are in there. And we ran into a situation that you couldn't pay enough money to. On the way back, we saw a carcass of a rabbit being eaten by two turkey vultures.
Out of like National Geographic.
And one of them flew off, the other one picked up the rabbit and flew off with the rabbit. And we were, I don't know, within what, 15, 20 feet of it? So I mean, it was, it proved that it was a wildlife management area. We posted signs that it was that the Porkutuck River, at the end of the trail, the entranceway, the DEM made this little parking lot, which was very nice. And people go there frequently and make use of it. And we posted signs identifying the Porkutuck River as part of the National Wild and Scenic Rivers. We did the same thing with signage over at Dynahue Park and with the Stillman Avenue Bridge on both sides and with the bridge just upstream of the Stillman Avenue Bridge, which I don't think has a real formal name to it. But the next thing that was on our list was we were notified by Danielle that we were, they were interested in the Stillman Lot, Stillman Avenue Lot. And it, as previously, was a mill and they wanted to get funding to check and assess the contamination of the property. So we, they said, Ms. Chesbrough asked if we could send a letter of support. So I agenda a letter of support and ran it through the Stewardship Council. Everybody approved it without any problems. And it was sent with a really, really impressive funding request. That was, that was a thing of beauty that Stonington put together with a whole bunch of other support letters. And we start our support letters off with the fact that we were authorized by Congress and I'm told by people that that kind of gets everybody's attention. And a very relatively short time later, Stonington received the funding for $139,000 to do an assessment of the property. Now, the next thing on the list was the Circus Lot, which is called the Circus Lot. The Circus Lot is called that because way back when, the circus used to pitch its tents over there. And it's 5.6 acres and about 600 feet along the Porkutuck River. It starts by the Amtrak trestle going over the Porkutuck and goes behind the fire department all the way over to Neys Avenue, where the current entranceway is. And a little bit past it, there's a 600 square foot stone, not stone, but a concrete building, which housed the, or I don't know if it houses a wellhead or as was supposed to house a wellhead for Westerly. And they currently own the property. But there's a stipulation in the deed that says that when Stonington wants the property back, they can take the property back for $35,000. Now, anybody that knows anything about real estate, 5.6 acres in Stonington with 600 feet of riverfront with a 600-foot concrete house is, that's like nothing, the $35,000. Now, Ms. Chesbrough has contracted, Stonington has contracted, I guess I should say, with Torranceia to do a survey of the property so we know what the lot looks like. And the, Ms. Chesbrough and I collaborated to get a funding request through the Wood Porkutuck Wild and Scenic Rivers Stewardship Council to get a conceptual design. And the idea behind it is to get these two documents, present them to the Board of Finance, and request the $35,000 to purchase the lot. And the end product is supposed, is designed to be a Riverside Park for the general public. And what we did was we did that request for funding through the Stewardship Council. The Stewardship Council overwhelmingly approved it. And the way it works is they give 50% of the funding, which is $4,000 currently. And then after we do some progress with getting the company going out for bids and getting the company to do it, they will give us the rest of the $2,000. So if I may approach the bench, I have a check. I have a check for Stonington.
Fred, thank you. You did all the heavy lifting for this, so thank you. And June, do you want to do a picture?
Sure.
Stacy, is that fine?
Mm-hmm.
We'll do a picture. I should hold your, can we hold this thing too?
Yeah, sure, sure. Where do you want, where do you want to do it?
Be careful, June.
Do you want to hold the check? You can hold it.
Sure. Well, why don't we do a 50/50? There we go. Yeah, and you can grab a hold of the other end of the check, too.
Sorry, Deb, you're missing all the fun.
Now, should we pull down the mist or not, or what?
We'll keep on doing that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred, thank you. You did all the heavy lifting on this and it's really exciting. I'm gonna give this to Stacy so I don't lose it.
Okay. Now, the other thing that I wanted to make mention of is that we still have, we still have several, we still have some reasonable amount of money for other funds, to fund other requests of that nature. So we should think about that. Now, right now, the maximum is $4,000. But in a lot of instances, you have something that's maybe $50,000, but initially you can break out $4,000 from it. And you have my cards, so if somebody wants to try to get funding from it. Now, of course, it would have to deal with the Porkutuck River or one of the rivers of the Wood Porkutuck Watershed. And if somebody has something that they think that they could have some funding for it, I would be only too happy to help them along. And I have the procedure that's necessary to go through. You know the procedure that's necessary to go through. And I could send that to them and they could take a look at it and see if they care to try to set up a request for funding for a grant from the Wild and Scenic Rivers Group.
Thank you.
And I would be more than willing to help them if they wanted to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add and give Deb Downey credit, you know?
Oh, and she just lost her.
Did we?
Oh, you did, didn't you?
Anyway, just to give her credit for her big part in.
June's just praising you, so.
Yeah, no, because you, this is about the grant that we got for the Stillman Ave. Property to do the assessment there, that Deb really had a big part in putting that grant together and the justification for.
Well, if she was the one that put that grant together, she did some incredible job. That request for funding was just a superb piece of paper. It went on forever.
We're very fortunate, yes.
We're really grateful to have her.
You know what, are you, either of you gonna see Deborah?
Yes, I have extras for her. I'll make sure she gets it.
Okay, you can give her that and the cards?
Absolutely, yep. You gave me enough. Yep.
No, no, I meant the business cards.
You gave me, you gave me a bunch. Unless you want to hand me more, I'll take more if you want.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this way she can, you know, if she has somebody that needs some help for the funding or the grants or whatever, she could just hand them the card.
Sure.
And take care of it.
Thank you. And thank you, Fred. You did a lot of work on this and didn't give up. And thank you. And then we'll keep you apprised, but we'll try and move forward pretty quickly with hopefully bringing on a landscape architect to do some conceptual drawings just to give the public and we said potentially hopefully the Board of Finance a sense of what could be there, building on to what Torranceia was able to find in terms of wetlands and the topography and other issues. So we can see what could be possible and then move from there. And it's likely a multi-year process to get to hopefully that end result. But this is a really important step, so thank you.
Oh, my thought on this is that even more so than the money, this is the thing that'll get the momentum going on the Circus Lot.
Exactly.
You know, this is, this is like, we've got the wheels churning and that's, that'd be an amazing thing. Ah, I lost my thought, sorry.
Okay. And we can always talk anytime. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for all of your support. I appreciate it.
Of course. And so we'll go over to Aquarian now. So thank you guys also for your patience. So I know we have George Logan, the Director of Community Relations for Aquarian with us to make a brief presentation. And I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry I didn't.
We invited.
John Wolf Smith. I am the new Operations Manager for the Aquarian Drinking Water Plant, right here.
Oh, wonderful. Really greets me, Will. Thank you for coming.
Well, you have a seat here, Will.
Sure.
It's a pleasure to have you guys, so thank you so much.
And thank you, George, and Debbie, and Donnie, I'm the funk.
Yes, yes.
All right, so I've got a long presentation here that I'm gonna shrink down to 10 minutes. But just keep in mind that this presentation I have available to give to anyone in Stonington. So please feel free to, you know, contact me in my office. I'd be more than happy to come down and provide this presentation. We want to talk about water conservation during climate change. And water conservation is the theme of this presentation. So this is a real quick background. Aquarian Water Company have been supplying water throughout Connecticut and now New England since 1857. We serve over 700,000 people in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire. Here in Stonington, we have the Palmer and Dean's Mill and reservoirs. We have over 122 million gallons of storage. Also, what I'll tell you later, we have our Lantern Hill private wells. And as I mentioned, we also bring water in from. One thing of note I would like to mention is that Aquarian Water Company was acquired by Eversource Energy in December of 2017. So we're a fully owned subsidiary of Eversource. All right, best laid plans. There we go, okay. So the effects of climate change across the US, I'm not gonna get into great detail. But the main theme of all is the hydrologic cycle in terms of where water evaporates from the streams or reservoirs and ponds and evaporates and then comes down in the clouds and you have snow packs. The point here, though, is that we are experiencing now higher, drier conditions in the interior west, right? We hear about that. They have all kinds of rules and regulations to handle groundwater that we don't have here in New England yet. In New England and the coast, we're experiencing hotter, wetter conditions on a more frequent basis. The effects of climate change across the USA, you'll see in New England, that 71% represents just more intense precipitation events. The effects of climate change across the US, increased frequency of heavy rainstorms, increased soil erosion issues, nutrient loading to reservoirs, which is bad because it requires us and Will to do more work to get the water clean for our folks in terms of turbidity, algae growth, taste and odor complaints, treatment costs, and other treatment byproducts. Across New England, increased annual precipitation. You see it all the time on the news, right? Increased heavy rains, shifts in precipitation frequency, hard to talk with the face of my mind. Warming annual temperatures and increased periods of dry weather lasting months at a time. We call them a flash drought that just pop up during the year. Across New England, become a hotspot for all these types of events. Just some of the graphics that give it a look. The effects of climate change on storm events, increased coastal erosion, increased use of road salt, not a friendly thing when you're relying on groundwater, right? Increased the operational costs in terms of snow damage, storm removal, and emergency overtimes. This is an example, back in 2016, in the Fairfield County portion of Connecticut, I was out doing inspection of one of the reservoirs and it was just a beautiful day, you know, June 2016. I figured I'd take a picture to show up to my mother. You know, she can see our engineer son out there in the reservoir. They took a picture. But lo and behold, that was in June of 2016. By December of that same year, that's the same vanish point. And we had one of those, our last real annual drought was back in 2016. Gonna chat about that a little bit. Now, we've had experience, you know, we're a small state. We could experience a drought situation in the eastern part of Connecticut, but yet not be in a drought situation in the lower southwestern part of Connecticut or vice versa, or in the northern part around the Hartford County. And we did experience that in 2016. But in 2020, what we did, we started the year and it wasn't going very well for us. Not as bad as 2016, but it wasn't going very well for us. So what we did is we increased social media. We increased using email to communicate to folks to conserve water. And we didn't use reverse 911 in areas to encourage folks not to irrigate as much. It got to a point in 2020, because we didn't want to repeat 2016, where we issued a mandatory irrigation ban in certain towns. In Darien, Greenwich, New Canaan, Stamford, and Westport. So we're trying our best to avoid that, right, in the future. We need the help of the community to do that. The Mystic systems in 2020, this staggered gold line here shows that we started the year in 2020, way up here, full. You can't even see the line, so full. Then all of a sudden, around July, everything was going hunky-dory. All of a sudden, the precipitation just stopped. Folks are using water. And by the time we got to November, October 19, we were only 30, little under 37% full. We were really worried. We didn't know what was gonna happen, right? So we did a lot of emergency communications and that sort of thing. Thankfully, the spigots in the sky opened up and all of a sudden it rained again. By the time we got to the end of the year and in January of 2021, we were almost full again. Right? So this is what we're talking about, these flash droughts. It has a big impact because if this, if this heavy precipitation didn't occur, which is unusual for the late fall, we could have been in a big pickle. Because oftentimes droughts last multiple years, not just one year or season. So drought summary for 2020, even here in Mystic, although the southwestern portion of Connecticut was in a much worse condition, even here in Mystic, we hit our first trigger. So that was not too long in the distant past there. So the Stonington system, I'm not gonna get into great detail here. This is where I have a bunch of slides, talking about the system, talking about the wells and the reservoirs. I'll run through them pretty quickly here. Of course, of course, country.
What's a trigger?
A drought trigger. So when the reservoir levels, we take a look at the total capacity of our reservoirs. And when they're full, spilling over the spillway, we call that 100%. When the reservoir levels start to drop, we just compare the percentage of how full the reservoirs are, and that's the percent of capacity. So if they're 90% full or 80% full, there's a, each reservoir system has a different trigger. So when it falls below a certain level, it triggers an action. The first trigger is more like, hey, let's communicate with the public, you know, voluntary reduction of use, you know, being very nice. Please, we hit the first trigger, please reduce your water use. When you hit the second trigger, it gets more intense. We say, oh, could you stop, you know, irrigating? Trigger three is an outright, you know, mandatory ban. You can't do it because we're in a danger zone. And then four and five, there's five triggers, is really, you don't want to get there, right? So we're trying to avoid that.
And June, just to say, they were so helpful with preparing the messages that we could put on our website and on social media to say what phase we were in and what might happen to prepare people. And you guys did a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, and so we have wells and surface water, right, which are the reservoirs. But we also have groundwater. I know there's lots of folks in Stonington who have their own personal wells, but we also have the Lantern Hill.
Lantern Hill.
Lantern Hill Well Field. And we treat that water there. So when I talk about Mother's Natural Work, that's the natural filtration of the water going through, getting into the underground aquifer. But we also chlorinate the system, the water. And we do, we add chemicals, pH adjustment. And depending on the quality of the water that we see coming through the treatment plant, possibly add iron and manganese removal of treatment.
Yeah, that last point on iron and manganese removal and sort of the seasonal and cyclic nature of the water supply. So right now, for example, Lantern Hill, the well field is shut off. We're not getting any water from Lantern Hill because seasonally during the wintertime, the quality of water coming from Lantern Hill drops. It's not as good. It's harder to treat to meet safe levels set by Department of Public Health. So we cut it off in the wintertime. The demand isn't there anyway. And we've got plenty of water in the reservoir here at Mystic, at Dean's Mill and Palmer, so we can meet that demand. So then in the springtime, when the water quality improves, the demand goes up. The seasonal residents come back to Mystic and Stonington. That's when Lantern Hill comes back online. And, you know, and thankfully, we've got better water at that time.
I'll get into a little later, but I mentioned now, right now, I believe the reservoir's spilling. Because I believe it's 100% or 100%.
Where it's ordered, 100%.
So it's looking pretty good. I'll go through here. So here are some of the facilities. This is where I start, I talk about the different facilities. But this is another important one I want to mention. This is the watershed, right, for the Palmer and Dean Reservoir. So the reservoirs you see down here, but look how large the watershed is, right? So any water that falls could, in this area, because of the topography, could end up, you know, into that reservoir. So we spend extra care within the watershed to make sure that folks understand that they're in the watershed and that if where we can identify any potential pollution sources, man-made pollution sources. So there's the watershed. And this just talks about some of the activities that we do in terms of monitoring the watershed. Which again, if we get into more detail, if we have more time. And then the treatment.
Actually, it's just good. It's good information.
Sure, sure. So we do monitoring of.
You think it's important things?
It is very important. So the watershed is extremely important, you know, in terms of monitoring for, again, any pollution points. Monitor land use activities, you know, whether it's someone who has a property within the watershed. Maybe they have a garage. Maybe they're changing the oil at their home. Maybe they don't realize they're in the watershed, just making sure. In some instances, not sure in Stonington, but sometimes there's garages, commercial businesses. And we visit those businesses and we let them know that, hey, you're in the watershed. And we actually will take a look around and we'll look at the drums and if they have barrels and what's in the barrel. Hey, do you have a secondary containment, all those sorts of things? And what we tell folks is that, look, we're here to do you a favor. We're here putting on our nice hat. You'd much rather have us identify a problem, right, that you could fix than have the state and Department of Energy Environmental Protection inspectors come down. So we try to help provide information to property owners and business owners within the watershed. Are Dean's Mill a treatment plant? Many of you may have driven by here, between the names, the road is?
It's Mistuxit. Well, it's right at the corner of Mistuxit and.
Cove.
Cove, well, Cove Road and Mistuxit and there's.
But I ain't the one from town, that's the area, right?
Yes, it's a three-corner and there's no cell service there.
Yeah, that's the big one. No cell service there.
So the treatment process at the treatment plant is involved. I'm gonna get to all the steps. But we've got, you know, coagulation, we've gathered the water from the reservoir. We have the watershed, right, that does the, that's natural, right? We protect the watershed. Then we do, add chemicals for coagulation, sedimentation, where we're doing a bit of a pre-filtering. Then we go through a more thorough filtration process. Then there's disinfection that we do right before we put it in the tank. And the tank also provides a bit as part of the treatment process because you want the chlorine to have a certain amount of contact time with the water before it goes out to the customers. Here's just some pictures. You may not have been to the plant before. Coagulation, sedimentation, filtration with sand gravel. The higher turbidity, water comes, you know, through the top, goes through different filter media. And the water comes out as a bit clearer than the water from the top. Still not ready to be for portable use, but it is a lot cleaner. It goes to the next step, filtration. But look at the water we should have. You drive by the facility, you may never realize that all this is inside that facility. And take a look at all of the instrumentation and electronics that we have and the valves and the controls. There's a lot involved. And Will does a great job with all that. So I'll try to be a little light here. Disinfection. Beer is proof that God loves us and wants us to be happy. Yep, throw that in there. All right, chemical feed system, just the chlorine that we mentioned. Sodium hypochlorite. Yeah. Sodium hypotanks. You'll see the secondary containment, try to be very safe. Usually it's more than the volume that's in the tank, usually at least 110% of the volume of the tanks. All kinds of pumps that help us in terms of the amount of the hypo that we're putting into the lines. And we have computer systems that monitor all of that. You can see all the analyzers that we have, right? Will knows each and every one of them and what they do and right where they go, yeah. And here's our control room. And you'll see the computer monitor there. We use software to monitor, you know, all of those different analyzers and components and levels. And look at all that. This is where, you know, our operators, they go through all kinds of training. This is where the experience is so important. This is why we like to bring in, you know, younger folks to come in here and learn this so we can make sure that we, if we keep it, keep it going, we keep the experience level going. But there is a lot involved. Testing. We do some testing, bench testing, right in our facility. But many of our samples we sent out to laboratories. But the bench testing locally gives us an idea, a head start in terms of what we are dealing with, with some of the water quality. And the P-Quat Seacoast Tampa, everybody's familiar with that, plays an extremely important role for fire protection and for water quality as well. And it's a big tank, 750,000 gallon tank, doing pretty, you know, good here in the Stonington Mystic system. And all right, these are just slides of building the system. I tried to show some historical slides, the previous Brisbane Hydraulic Company. Look at the equipment that they're using there. The wheels are made of, you know, rubber, right, and wood. Large valves. A lot of thought went into building the water distribution systems here in Stonington and throughout Connecticut. And here's just some pictures of the pump station, the booster pump station. These are the motors and the pumps are down there. These are the, the motors and the pumps are down there, and this helps us get the water around. Distribution network, I, you know, with more time, I, I talk about the distribution network a bit. And then the Stonington distribution system, a relatively, uh, current map, at least six months ago. You know, we're constantly updating our GIS system. The different colors represent different size pipes and those sorts of, uh, sorts of things. And you can see we're heavily around the Mystic area, we're also in Grand. Northern part of Stonington, obviously we have less, I mean, but there are some customers up there, uh, in this area as well. Water quality testing and reporting, uh, thousands, tens of thousands of reports. Uh, uh, water quality tests and, and analysis, every year. And we add that information with our billing. And if you don't want to wait for your billing, you can go to our website at www dot Aquarionwater dot com, and you can look up the water quality, uh, reports for your, uh, for your area. Cost of water is very, uh, very economical, and you, you talk about the cost is far less than a, you know, a penny per gallon, you know? It's, uh, not very expensive compared to other, uh, utility costs. Ongoing, throughout Connecticut, we have lots of surface water treatment plants, uh, many, uh, reservoirs and well fields and pumps. And, you know, we've got our, our, our staff, our employees, our workforce is out there, uh, keeping all this running and going smoothly. I mean, look at the amount of water main we have throughout Connecticut, over three thousand two hundred miles, right? I think the distance from the east coast to the west coast is, you know, it's, it's in that range, right?
Less than that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a lot of water main out there that we are maintaining. Indoor use. When you take a look at indoor use, now we get into the conservation, right? Indoor use, uh, your toilets, twenty-four percent, the use, toilets, showers, twenty percent, faucets, nine percent. The washers, so you can see why over time, uh, more efficiency units, right? Whether it's, uh, for, uh, water efficiency, for toilets or, or showerheads, or your dishwashers or your washing machine, it makes a huge, it makes a huge difference. Now the step outside, water conservation. Irrigation, just about forty-five percent overall, every community is a little different. Of all the water that we treat, all that treatment, all that work, right, out in the watershed, forty-five percent of all that water that we treat and produce and put into P-Quat Seco's tank gets used for watering grass, right? So this is where our focus is in terms of water, uh, conservation. Uh, this, uh, graph here, uh, this table, uh, just shows, uh, the reservoir levels, the Greater Brisbane system, the Granite system, Stanford and Mystic, and, uh, very good news, Mystic's at a hundred percent, so that's a good thing.
Now, and we've been at a hundred percent, as you can see from that last table, for, you know, months. Uh, well, back through all of these, in the last few weeks. Here's one of the things that, and it would, you might not have picked up on it on one of those previous slides. Um, it's a fairly big watershed that feeds the reservoir, but the reservoir itself is not very big. So like in two thousand sixteen there, that, that dashed gold line, if we go for, you know, a fairly extended period of time without rainfall, that reservoir starts to go low very quickly, very quickly. Now, the good side of that is, all we need is one really good rain event, and it pops right back up because it's got such a large watershed feeding into it. But lack of rain, you know, you know, in many days in a row, long periods of time, that's, that's where, um, he was talking about before, we got close to one of those first triggers on the advisories back in, um, two thousand sixteen.
And these other lines here are those different various trigger levels, when you hit a below a percentage. Okay, so, all of that to build up to the main reason I'm here, water conservation. So starting in, uh, uh, April first, from April first through October thirty-first, in all of Stonington, in entire Mystic system, in Grand, we are instituting, uh, two day per week watering. And it's mandatory, two days per week. So it's gonna take some, uh, getting used to for the public. We have, uh, banners that we're going to politely ask, uh, the firehouses if we could, fire stations if we can post them. I know around here, I think you have the Stonington Borough Firehouse and the North Stonington Fire Station, right? And we'll, uh, it is a voluntary basis. Uh, we're also would ask the, ask the town if you would consider, if you would consider putting something on your website in terms of the two day per watering, we'll provide something specific for, uh, Stonington, the Mystic system. Uh, and we have things like, uh, if the, based on the last digit of your address number, you know, if it's zero, two, four, six, or eight, you know, the even numbers, Sunday and Wednesday, between midnight and ten AM, or between six PM and midnight, if you can irrigate there in that time. And obviously, in the odd days, you have different days as well. If you have no number to your house, we have that worked out here as well. Our belief is that, uh, irrigating your lawns, watering your lawns two days a week is plenty to keep your lawn healthy. Uh, studies have found, we have seen, that watering your lawns two days a week actually makes your lawn stronger and healthier because the roots that, uh, uh, grow deeper and stronger to get to that, the water is supposed to be water every day. And if it's raining, if there's any precipitation going on, don't irrigate. That is our, so it's mandatory. So some of the questions we get is, okay, it's mandatory, what are you gonna do for those offenders? Well, we send out, you know, letters, you know, we try, most, you know, people are, are good-hearted and want to do the right thing and just so they understand what's, uh, what's going on. So we handle it in that way. And we ask the town to help out in terms of communicating to, uh, to folks. Um, we also provide, uh, variances to this mandatory two day, two day per week watering. For example, if you have new plantings in your property, just give us a call, let us know, we'll put you on the list for the, you know, for the variance. Or if you have a high efficiency irrigation system that just naturally uses less water than a normal irrigation system, if you can, uh, if it's certified or you can prove that it's fifteen to twenty percent more efficient than a normal irrigation system, you could be allowed to water, uh, more. Um, let's see, I missed anything here? So these are simple steps to help us to ensure our, our water supply. All right, so again, the Big Dale Air, the, the, the main point is water conservation and the two day per week watering mandatory in Stonington from April first to October thirty-first. And I'm at the end, uh, just about the end now. So climate, uh, climate change again, uh, more frequent heavy rains, more frequent flooding, more frequent drought, uh, periods. And, um, conservation helps us slow the rise of water rates over the long term, right? Because the more that we conserve, think about it, if we're able to conserve a million gallons of water, that's a million gallons of water less that we have to find in a new source of supply. And that's a very, uh, good thing. Also, uh, uh, more stringent, uh, regulations from the state as far as stream flow releases. We as a water utility now have to, uh, uh, over time, uh, the coming years, release more water, uh, into, uh, out of our reservoirs for the environment, uh, downstream of the dams, for our streams, for the ecology and for the environment. So we're gonna be releasing more water because, you know, we're all balancing, uh, trying to balance the needs of the natural resource, water for, uh, uh, people and the natural habitat. So that's gonna result in, uh, you know, the water being more valuable for all of us. And that brings me to the end. You've been so kind, I really appreciate it. And again, remember, if any questions, don't hesitate to call me. I'm more than willing to come out and give this presentation to any group. I've, uh, I've been down to, I was down at Stonington in the spring of last year, I went to one of your senior centers, for example.
Oh, cool.
Yes, and gave the, the presentation as well. So thank you very much, really appreciate your time.
Thank you. I mean, we'll definitely follow up with some questions, but just off the top of my head, will you guys be, um, doing more kind of communication as we get closer to April in terms of like things we can put on our website and social media about the conservation effort and the why?
Absolutely. We're gonna provide you with graphics that you can use. And when we provide you with the graphics, if you'd like us to modify the graphics, then we'll do that in a way that's, uh, helpful to you. Yes, we want to help out as any way we can to make sure that the information gets out in a timely manner to the public.
This is an oddly specific question, but would this also tie to, um, gardens that grow food? So like we have a couple of community gardens and how, um, would that thing apply?
Right, absolutely, exactly, exactly. So this is what we're talking about in terms of variances. So that in case someone tries to, uh, call in, you know, overuse, we'll, we'll already know, right? Because, oh, I have a bearing, this is a community garden, urban garden, yes, absolutely. We're gonna be very reasonable about this, right?
No, it's, it's a great ever, the last thing is, have you guys ever partnered with any communities on, just that I asked, because we did it not that long ago and it was moderately successful, but, um, we tried to do a community rain barrel drive.
Absolutely. Again, you go to, uh, Aquarionwater dot com, we have a rain barrel program.
Okay.
Yes, and it was about to get kicked off in a little while, so we want to get your orders in because every year, our rain barrel program is getting more and more popular. And it's a matter of, uh, available, you know, supply and, and demand in terms of first come. First of, we have ordered more rain barrels than we have in the previous year, uh, but we, the requests keep, uh, building as more folks become aware of our rain barrel program. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, look at that, thank you.
Thank you for me, I like, almost like I planted that question. Great, thank you.
I love your enthusiasm.
Yes.
Of course, of course.
It's nice to meet you.
We're pretty embarrassed.
Yeah, there's Deb.
Thank you.
Deb says thank you.
Hey, Deb, oh, thank you for your time and your, and your patience.
All right, thank you so very much, guys, and, um, we're sure you're very busy, so you're, you're welcome to stay, but you're also very understandably, if you need to.
I do have another presentation, so yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stay warm. Um, so will move on to any comments from the public?
Oh, I, I just have a question, actually. You, water conservation is, is important for everybody, but I think you are speaking specifically, uh, for this mandatory water conservation for the people who are provided water by Aquarian?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
So not Westerly Water?
Yeah, now, uh, is the town going to stretch that water conservation mandatory thing to everybody in the town of Stonington?
Well, this is the first we're hearing about it, so we'll definitely reach out to Westerly Water and if it seems like a good recommendation. We definitely keep trying to push people on the rain barrels and, you know, be more conscious of that, but, um, it could be a good opportunity, um, to just at least educate everybody, even if it's not pushed out all across the town.
Okay.
Good question, though, Fred.
Very good question, Fred.
All right, so, um, nothing under, and no other public comments? So could I get a motion to approve the regular meeting that's of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two?
Don't.
Can I get a second?
Hi, second.
All right, um, motions, I get any discussion?
No.
Thank you, Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. So we don't have any correspondence. So under appointments, so we have our Economic Development Commission, um, and we had, um, applicants from, um, ranging from Laura Graham, Donald Fury, David Brown, Paul Geis, Keith, and Derek Johnson. Um, so before we move into our motion to appoint, um, and again, as a reminder, we have two alternate spots, um, there. Before we get into maybe, I don't know, it just, I'll just, I want one of you to start, but I just wanted to say just a big thank you to all the applicants, um. I'm sure you guys feel the same. I just, I always feel so grateful when we have such diverse and different applicants step up for these different boards and commissions and just really grateful that people are willing to give their time. It is extensive, um, just giving back to the town. So unfortunately, we only have two spots, it's always a really hard part of this, um, but I don't know, Deb or June, you want to start kind of your thoughts on it?
No, I don't mind. Deb, you want to go? You, you want me to go?
I don't care, it doesn't matter, whichever's easier for you would be on the phone.
Okay, well, but I'll go first, um, so, and, and, and I think I want to, I want to start by saying that, um, the Economic Development Commission welcomes members of the public to all their meetings for input. So, um, if any of these, whoever isn't chosen as an alternate, they can certainly, um, go to the meetings, but... All right, so the two people that I, um, that I would like to see are Mr. Fury, um, and Mr. Johnson. And I have specific reasons for each one of them. So, uh, Mr. Fury, although he said that, you know, this was, would be the first actual true volunteering, um, appointment, he, for the last ten years, I have seen him attend Board of Finance meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings, planning and zoning meetings. I think he attended every single K through twelve building committee meeting. Um, I think that I say, a, an important quality that a volunteer needs for the Economic Development Commission is to understand how intertwined all of these boards and commissions work and really how the town works. So, I mean, understanding our zoning laws, understanding the budget process, um, you know, understanding what the Board of Selectmen do, I, I just think is really, really important. And I, you know, I, I feel that way now even stronger with all the liaison, you know, roles that we have. And attending these meetings myself, I, I see just how important, understanding how all of these things work. Mr. Fury has attended all of them. So I, I, I can't, I, I don't know another person seriously who has volunteered for a position that has that level of experience with how all these, um, boards work. So, so for that, I mean, I, I think he would be a, a great addition to the Economic Development Commission because he has great firsthand knowledge of how, um, you know, the budget works, our zoning laws, and, and just how the whole process works for anything that the Economic Development Commission may come up with as a recommendation. Um, and then Mr. Johnson, well, what I thought was really, really important about his level of experience was, um, very similar to the, the, one of the alternates that we just picked for planning and zoning, who they, their careers on the other side of the table. So where he works in development, um, he takes a look at what could go wrong. So it's all the things that, you know, it seems like a great idea, things like, like this could happen and, and that could happen, and these are all the benefits, but then he looks at, okay, but what is it really gonna cost? And what could go wrong? And what happens if the worst-case scenario happens? So I think that kind of, of insight and experience, um, I think would really help some of the proposed projects, and even some of the, some of the, um, applications that have been presented to the planning and zoning that have been approved, right? Some of the things that have already been approved, then after the fact, it's like, well, what about this and what about that? So I think if he's on, um, the Economic Development Commission, even, even as an alternate, because they have, you know, they have some input, where he can be more like the devil's advocate, well, this just seems like a great idea, but what if this happens? So all those things that, you know, may not have been thought of can be thought of, so. Anyway, those are, those are my two choices. I mean, it's a tough, it's tough choices. They're all very, very good quality candidates, and like you said, it's, it's, uh, it's very humbling when there are so many really good people that want to get back to the town, so, um. Anyway, so I was, my, my two are Mr. Fury and Mr. Johnson, so I'm done with that. Okay?
Deb, do you want to share your thoughts since the last meeting?
Sure, sure, I will. Um, again, like June, it's like here we are with five very qualified, great candidates, and we can only pick two, and I'm honestly really hoping that the ones that don't get it still stay active and involved because there may be other openings on the EDC or other commissions later in the year. Um, I can, of course, I'm going second, but I hate to echo what June said. Don Fury was my choice as well for the same reason. I was on the K twelve committee, he went to every single meeting as well as, you know, Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen. He has actually given us in the past insights and some of his comments with, you know, just his understanding of how different pieces of the town fit together based on his attendance at those meetings. Um, he has the time and commitment to do the EDC, and that combined with his perspective of kind of a cross-board perspective, I really think at this time, he's a great candidate. I also had thought about Derek Johnson because his experience with distressed properties really could help the town out right now with all the brownfields, uh, properties we're looking at. And also his experience on the developer side, where he can really critically look at an application or, you know, when a developer comes to give a presentation, really understand where they're coming from with a point of view that, you know, we hadn't really had before. So while I think that any of the five would be fabulous, Mr. Fury and Mr. Johnson are also mine two choices for those reasons.
No, sorry, Deb, I don't have COVID, but I do have a little cold, um, so you can, the number of tests, but, um, no, I, I really struggled with this one, um, because in looking at them, I, I, I don't know, um, most of them, while a few I, I've had, um, experiences with, and so I'm just, you know, I, I definitely struggled. Like David Brown has been really active on our Veterans Committee, and he's done some tremendous work, um, trying to fundraise and, you know, the idea of a worker be somebody who's really not afraid to take on the work, and he's definitely shown that he's willing to do that. And similarly with, with Laura Graham, um, the work she's put in on the sidewalks and raising advocacy, and, you know, we haven't always seen eye to eye on all the issues, but I think it was important to have diversity of thought and different. I think it was important to have diversity of of thought and different, you know, views that represent the town um on these different boards and commissions, and then Paul, I I only got to meet the the two times, um, once when he expressed interest in the meeting, but his experience at Kind Point and what people have shared about his experiences, again, bringing people together, creating partnerships, um, his focus on seniors was really impressive, seniors and youth. Um, but in listening to what you guys, and again, I I struggled with all of them, but listening to what you guys are saying now, I I can definitely see in thinking about the EDC and the the makeup of them, who, where the biggest gaps are, and um I don't know Don Fury well, but I really like what you guys said, and I think some of your points, June, are well taken, like how important it is to understand how these other boards work, and particularly thinking about, you know, how EDC writes potential letters of recommendation for for planning and zoning, or they might be the the first stop that a business comes to with an idea, um, both Don and and Derek, I think could really help in a lot of ways and bring different perspectives, both how the town works, but then maybe potentially catch some potential issues before they arise from from Derek's experience, and then the the Board of Financing, I think is a missing piece on the EDC, and and no offense to any of the existing members, they just haven't um served in that capacity, and to understand those challenges are key um to not, you know, creating tougher situations and kind of coming together. So, um, and then Deb, I really liked your point about the distressed properties, just thinking about the mills on Mechanic Street and um, the brownfield projects and, you know, others that have come up, and again, we just don't, other than you, we don't have anybody um who can really help guide us on that. Um, so like I said, I'm I'm really torn by, like, June, you said too, maybe the message to the others is not one, hopefully, if there, there's a number of people on the EDC who've been on there a while, and perhaps they'll be willing to step off, seeing what great candidates we have, and maybe keep the rotation coming, or um the EDC, I think, like some other commissions, you know, you can still come and almost be pretty active, even if you're not an actual member, you can listen and participate and ask questions and and be involved, um, and maybe that's another way for, we do have other openings on other boards and commissions. Um, so I'll let one of you guys make a a motion.
Alright, so I I make a motion uh that we appoint Donald Fury and Derek Johnson as alternates to the Economic Development Commission.
My second.
Alright, um, motion has taken, any further discussion?
No, I'll just echo, you know, the same thing I think I said before, it's just any of them would have been really good. Um, and I think they will, and I hope that if there's openings later this year or in the future, they consider reapplying.
Yeah, no, and we'll, and we'll reach out to all of them tomorrow, um, and and echo that, um, so thank you, guys, this is always kind of a hard part of this job. Um, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, the motion carries, um, so just like, yeah, a thank you to to everybody who applied, and like I said, we'll send out something, um, but um now we'll go over to a reappointment for the Stonington Housing Authority. Um, can I get a motion to reappoint Julie Savin to the Stonington Housing Authority?
So moved.
Uh, just go here, a second.
My second.
Motion has taken, any discussion?
Just thank you, thank you to her.
Yeah, a big thank you, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So under old business, under project priorities, um, I was hoping we could move this to the next meeting, hopefully Deb will be here and we can um go through them in more detail, um, and we'll have some, hopefully some more updates and just some time to really dig in a little bit more on narrowing down maybe the scope and the the priorities, and I'll have time to to talk more with some of the department heads too, um, if that's okay with you guys.
That is fine, thank you.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Thank you, right.
You should, motion, motion to table?
The discussion?
Oh. A motion to table?
Yeah, can I get a motion to table the discussion on project priorities um to the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Sure, so moved.
My second.
Thank you, um, any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion, aye, I think Deb's and I.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, fair enough, all those should carry, thank you, guys. So the next is a resolution authorizing the First Selectmen to enter into and execute and deliver documentation regarding Connecticut Deep's Clean Water Fund Grant Program to fund the infiltration and inflow study being performed by the WPCA. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
My second.
Motion has taken, is there any discussion?
Nope, this is a very needed item.
Yes, it's very exciting, I know it's, you know, it's not all of it, but it's still some.
Well, it's exciting because it helps find the, some problems, and it, and it already has, so.
Money well spent.
It's very rare, it's very rare that WPCA has good news.
I know. We actually had a P O C D meeting on Monday, and Lynn Young was there, and she's like, it's very rare that I have good news on sewers when I've got some.
Good news, right, so, yeah, no, it's, it's, this is a good thing.
Alright, get a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, the motion carries. Um, so we have a motion to approve the use of the town dock by the Stonington Garden Club for the Gardens by the Sea Tour on June eleventh to the twelfth um of this year. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Give a second, my second, is there any discussion?
I'm just, not even there doing it again, I'm so glad we're moving sort of towards normalcy.
I know, it'll be next, and it'll go after us to the um Waterfront Commission, so they they know all the steps, so they'll, they'll they have liability insurance as well, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Um, alright, so we're onto the final one, um, comments from the segment, Deb, do you wanna start?
Sure, I'll, and I'll be quick, just like, just because it's awkward on the phone, but um I just had three things. Um, one was, and you sort of mentioned part of it in the WPCA, because they did find and repair that leak in Ole Mystic, they were, they did vote in their past meeting to allow um some additional flow, and so some additional people from the waitlist are gonna be able to connect to the sewer, which is good. Um, and the whole point of having that I N I study and and repairing things. So I don't recall the exact number, and I wanna say it's like forty thousand gallons per day, this additional flow, but they are going to allow it, and people to connect, um, a limited amount. The second thing I just wanted to touch base on is the Board of Ed, I thought, um, we had a really good meeting with Dr. Aska.
Oh, yeah.
Discussing, you know, what we're looking for, she was superintendent, I thought she did a great job, and I really feel like that we were able to give a lot of good input. And finally, my other comment is, um, we were talking about the rain barrels, and um although they didn't have a meeting this month based on what they plan to discuss in the spring, the Education Committee is planning another rain barrel fund agreement. A, a really successful one last year, and so they are planning to do it again, so that's another way to get rain barrels. Um, and kind of along those lines, I think in addition to kind of promoting the conservation, kind of promoting that watershed awareness um is something else really important, because there's a lot of people in that watershed who are not Aquarian customers. I mean, I live in that watershed.
Me too.
Who are not Aquarian customers, and that's something else that we can think of, you know, for education for the future. He was talking about, you know, the inspections and, you know, things like underground tanks or spill drums or things that could impact the aquifer, and that's, you know, some education that can kind of be an ongoing thing, so, so that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, that's a, Deb, that's a good point, because um it looked like the watershed, I was gonna look at the map a little bit more of a, I'm in that watershed area also, and everyone that lives in that watershed area has a well, so they wouldn't necessarily be hooked up to Aquarian, but like just how critical that whole watershed is for the water supply for those who, you know, are hooked up to Aquarian, so, um, maybe looking at some, it's it's a key thing, making sure everybody knows about it, so. Um, so I was not able to go to the Climate Change Task Force meeting, uh but I'll be able to go around that, you know, the next meeting that they have. They are meeting every month this year, so that's a, that's a good thing. I know that Pace came to the uh to the to the meeting last week, um, so, but I'll, I'll be able to get an update um on that when they have their draft, and I haven't talked to any of the members yet about it. Um, and other than that, then it was just the, the Police Commission, um, the Police Commission meeting, uh there are, um, so there was a line, a new double yellow line, I think, on Mechanic Street, that's not in the right place, and there's been a couple of and it's something I, I think, I don't know if it's been communicated to WPCA or not, but it's
DPW?
Uh, the, the DP, yeah, not, I don't know, DPW, okay, acronym, so. Um, so it, because what happens is, I think at nighttime, when there's like poor visibility, if they're on, you know, it too many, there's been a couple of accidents with hitting parked cars. So this is something um that came up at the Police Commission meeting, um, to take a look at in the spring about restriping that street, so.
I don't know if that's come up yet, so thank you.
Yeah, um, and, I mean, that was it, I mean, they're, you know, they're doing some external, um, I think the, I think January thirty first is the deadline for external applicants for the uh the Chief's position. Um, and then, I I don't, they didn't really share what the deadline is for interviewing and whatnot after that, um, but those are kind of the highlights, and I think the last Police Commission meeting wasn't the shortest one on record, but it was pretty darn quick, it was like nineteen minutes or so and the meeting was done, so, um, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you, and, sorry, because they're not being good, I'm gonna be super short, um, I'll do more at the next meeting, but um to say, we've been spending a lot and a lot of time on grants, um, we'll see if any of them come through, but um ranging from working at the WPCA on a potential I N I and kind of actual work grant, um, we at least heard back from, they asked a few follow up questions, and that might be a good sign. Um, we met at the Seaport last week, Keith and I about um building on a grant we applied for last year with them, and how we might tweak it and changes, and we've been having a couple of calls with them and their team, and they're, they're just lovely to work with, um, trying to figure that out. Um, we've had a few emails back and forth with SEMA about um this potential living shoreline grant, um, that could go hand in hand with the boathouse, and maybe again, some work with the Seaport, but if that one's pretty unclear. Um, and again, just to say, you know, these grants take so much work, um, and who knows if any of them will come to fruition, um, but we we are trying to go after things when we see them, plus a lot of calls and um kind of education sessions have been put on by CA, CCM, and others about the potential infrastructure money that'll be coming, again, it's still not a hundred percent clear, you know, how local municipalities versus the state will access it, but actually today, we had a really good call, um, people from DOT and others were on it, and it does look like there'll at least be some funding for like local bridges, um, and, but again, everybody wants design, construction, shelter ready projects for the most part, so again, we have we have some things that are far along, like the Ledger Bridge, um, which are, which obviously is really needed, um, and we're doing our bridge inventory, which is still excellent, so we can at least show like which ones are the most pressing, most critical, maybe some might be five years off, but they might be a huge, you know, huge number, so, um, I'm just really happy we got started on that two years ago, and um then just to say, um, about Pace, I have a call with Julia from the Climate Change Task Force on money to talk about the follow up from that meeting and potentially doing um a engagement with Pace, um, and then just to say again, COVID's taking a lot of time, um, the state has given, which we're very grateful for, um, local municipalities, um, really kind of all the authority and and ability to to get and receive and distribute masks, gloves, and test kits, um, but it's taken up a lot, a lot of time from a lot of different people, Stacy and myself, George, our emergency management, um, director, and then Leanne and her team at Human Services, you know, people at DPW have helped, you, we've been really, the police have helped, you, um, Captain Olson and his son have just given up, you know, voluntarily their time on weekends to help us with distribution, so it's been, um, the fire departments and EMS providers have been great. Um, but just taken up a lot of time, and we've been trying to do, I think, the best job we can, doing outreach to like all of our kind of assisted or you know, kind of certain living facilities, um, our daycares, our schools, bus drivers, um, our um senior facilities, our, some of our nonprofit partners, homebound residents, um, obviously the general public, our fire, EMS, police, um, ourselves, and on the plus side, we actually have um hopefully more tests coming, so I think we're gonna have, um, this will be the final allotment from the state, but we'll be able to, I think, get hopefully most people who who need one or want one can have one, and I'll just share one positive story on that, because it's been a lot of work and kind of draining, but um we got a message from one of the ambulance crews, um, that thanks to the the first round of COVID tests we got right around the holidays, they were able to identify three separate EMS volunteers on three separate ships that all had COVID, that they were able to catch, and they could have potentially spread it to their whole crews, and it could have been pretty devastating for entire ambulance service in town. So, um, that was just really, you know, uplifting to hear, it made, it made a difference, um, so hopefully that helped, you know, in a pretty significant way. And then we'll, we'll do more updates next time, but the last thing I just wanted to say is, on the land, we've talked about this a lot in other meetings, and it's kind of gone quiet, but I do just want to say, I have been doing more work on the acronym I can never get right, the Land Erosion Climate Resiliency Control Board. Um, and I I do hope that the next meeting, we could bring this up and start moving on it, um, I've I've gotten some more I don't know, assurance that I feel like this is the right direction, and um I'm hopefully setting up a call with Waterford to see how they're doing, yeah, the, the Climate Change Task Force did some research, but they shared, and they're one of the more active boards. Um, so hopefully we we can move forward on that, since I do feel like for the, the Climate Change Task Force, they've, they've done a lot of work, and this was one of their top asks, um, and and hopefully, again, if we read through it and get through some of our questions, but again, if you have questions before the next meeting, you could send them to Stacy if you want the town attorney to answer them, or um, but hopefully, we'll, we'll try and do a summary document of what we've gotten so far from the attorney, and where we are, um, and what the next steps can possibly be.
Okay.
Okay.
We can talk about that the next week.
Next meeting, yeah, just to prep for it. Deb, thank you so much for calling in.
Well, you're welcome.
Have a good rest of the week.
Thank you.
Alright, Dan.
Alright, bye, 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 Deb, safe travels.
Okay.